...to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the devotion and justice of our all.
Dear Heavenly Father, be with us as seemingly as we do the business for the city and the community of the good and welfare, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
This is Item C, approval of the agenda. So this is to approve the agenda for January 8th, 2024, regular planning commission meeting.
I believe we approved the agenda for January 8th, 2024.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. This is D, citizens comments. So at this point, we would allow citizens to comment on anything they deem necessary. Each citizen is allowed three minutes. Each guest must, is welcome to comment, but they must state their first and last name and their address and write it down on this paper. Mr. Chair, at this point, if you want to, you can open citizens comments.
We will open citizens comments. Anybody at this time, feel free, you can come up and state your first and last name here, address, and allow three minutes.
How do we enter pictures into the minutes?
You can go ahead and send the pictures right after the planning mission.
Okay. Hi, Chairman Graffin and Honorable Members of the Goddard Planning Commission, or Committee, I guess it is, not Commission. I am Curtis Kidwell and I live at 21101 West 23rd Street South, just to the south of the development. My wife and I live at the address on the 10 acres just since 1989, and it is just to the south of the development in the floodway reserve. And I'm here to speak out against granting additional variances and setbacks and lot coverages to the Trails End addition. The reason for my objection is as follows: The current water retention system is extremely inadequate. You allow building on a type A floodplain with a 1% chance per year of flooding and the worst percolation rate in the county of 90-plus minutes. This fall, when three and three-quarter inches of rainfall filled the retention ponds, when there were no structures, no payment on the south end, and yet the retention system is full and cannot hold the inch of rain today that we got, let alone a 10-year rain or a 100-year rain. Let's not forget this, that starting in the Halloween flood of 1998, when 12 inches of rain over two days fell, or 12 inches in two days. 2008, we had 10 inches of rain in one day. That nearly flooded my backyard. I had to build a berm after that flood. And then the latest flood we've had was in 2015, where over 15 inches of rain fell in three days and flooded the ponds at St. Andrews, flooded Tanganika, the road at 183rd was incrossable. So we've got the same situation building up at Trails End. These were taken this afternoon on my way home. These were taken a day after three and three-quarter inches of rainfall. And has anybody here from Garver or, here from Garver, I would love to hear, if you can tonight, how you plan to fix the problem. And then, so, part of the reason for objecting against the setback and the additional lot coverage is basically, we're going to trade one little bit of land that could absorb rain into roofs, gutters, downsouts, and overloading the retention system and water storm drains to the max. If you look at the one from today, if you look at the storm drain that is on the, the northeast side there, one of those drains is probably about six inches from the top, the other one's probably about 14 inches from the top.
Mr. Kidwell, at this point, you have three minutes. Do you want closing statements?
Yeah, I'll move on to my closing statements. Let me remind you, from the zoning regulations, Article 1, Paragraph 111, that part of the reason that this committee exists is to protect and promote health and safety. And right now, we're looking at a situation that does not promote health and safety and is liable to damage not only my property, the Johnson's property, but all the properties south of Trails End, going all the way to Lake Walton where that all collects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Teresa Johnson, 21405 West 23rd Street South. Just west, Curtis Kidwell. I just want to reiterate everything he said. The water is just amazing. Our property is being, if there's no longer a mo on the east part of the property because it's always wet. It's just, there's just too much water. And I do thank you. I am very grateful for the new culvers that were put in because that was amazing, that really, really needed to be done. But probably the water's still going to go across the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any others coming?
I'm Len Mitten. I live at 211 South, 15th Street West. I just had a question. The letter we got, it indicated every lot for the variance, but there's already structures being built on some of the lots. Is there a reason for that?
Means that they're divided?
Okay. And I'm just kind of curious on why. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Terry Gersko. I live at 21025 West 23rd Street. I'm just on the east side of Curtis, and I see the problems he's, they're having with all their rains. And with that, I was curious about as to the stakes that have been put out, as to if they're going to be widening that 23rd street in front of our houses, or I was curious what's going on there because I have solid trees in that area, and the stakes are like going through the trees. And I was curious to ask how, first of all, how they figured the width of the road. I measured the stakes and they're like 28 foot from the center on one side, and on the other side, on my side, they go back 48 feet. And I was curious as to how they came up with that and what they plan to do with it. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Terry Gersko. 21025 West 23rd.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if you welcome to, you can close citizens comments.
We will close citizens comments.
This is Item E, approval of the minutes. So this is to approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes from November 13th, 2023, and December 11th of 2023. So we didn't approve the November minutes because I didn't write them. So we tabled it until January today. So if you could approve both the November 13th and December 11th meeting minutes today.
I'll move to approve regular commission meeting minutes for November 13th, 2023, and December 11th, 2023.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. This is Item F, border zoning appeals. This is F1, variance request for setbacks and lot coverage of Goddard Trails End, case number VAR 23-3. So Christopher Baum, Garver USA, submitted a variance application behalf of the developer Kirk Richards and Brian Legally for the Goddard Trails End development. The variance request is to reduce the setback requirements and maximum lot coverage requirements, introduce larger duplexes and single-family homes onto the lots. Variances are required to be published once in the city newspaper and letters sent out to all property owners within 200 feet, if they are in the city, 1,000 if they are in the county. Variances are considered final once they are presented before the planning mission. Concerns are raised by some of the county residents about the amount of water being detained in the south detention pond, and by extension, additional on the north side of 23rd. So I spoke with some of them prior to the meeting. The city spoke with the public works department, the city engineer, and the engineering firm representing the project. It was determined upon review that the detention pond was functioning properly. So there was no issues with the ponds from either our engineer, with Garver, or the public works department. Obviously, we've had some high rainfall, which has collected more water than usual, but other than that, detention is adequately functioning, according to two different engineering firms and the public works department. The planning commission is considering approving a variance for the lots within the Goddard Trails End development. Article 10-107(c), authorized variances from the provisions of these regulations shall be granted by the board only in accordance with the standard set out in Section 10-107(c). It may be granted only in the following instances and no others. And I've outlined purple, which is going to be to vary the applicable bulk regulations, including maximum height and lot coverage and minimum yard requirement. So this says, these are, there's only certain variances that are allowed. You can't just ask for variance for anything. So these are what's considered acceptable requests for variance, and we're looking at number two. And per the city attorney, case 12-759e is for guidance and does not need to be met in order to grant a variance. And so these are the requirements that are set in the subdivision regulations, 1 through 5. This is the question. Purple is the answer. The variance request arises in such condition, which is unique to the property question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, is not created by an action to actions of the property owner or the applicant, so it is not unique to the land in question. There is no actions that have been taken by the developers. So this is not necessarily a unique variance request. It's not an abnormal lot or anything of that nature. They're just asking for additional setback requirements and increased lot coverage to build bigger homes and to build bigger duplexes to meet, you know, the demand for the, for the growing market. That granting of the variance would not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. So everybody in this development is going to be, have the same setback requirements. There's no adverse impact on adjacent property owners. Lots are within development, and any stormwater is being adequately detained per the city engineer, the public works director, and the engineering firm representing the project. The strict application of the provisions of these regulations from which the variance is requested would constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner representing the application. So the hardship would not, would be in the marketability of lots, but is not considered an unnecessary hardship. So there's not going to be an unnecessary hardship for this variance request. That the variance described, desired would not adversely affect public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, and that granting the variance desire would not be opposed to general spirit intended to these regulations, and will not affect health, safety, or welfare. So it will not affect public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, and is not against the general spirit or intent of these regulations, deeming that all the questions that are in and concerns are raised are mostly stormwater related. And as mentioned, the city engineer, Garver, public works director see no issues, and we'll go into a little bit more about the stormwater detention calculations that Garver has made for this detention pond. And as mentioned, Chris Baum here is going to represent Garver for this, for this particular agenda item. This is development in question. This is 23rd and 215. Public notice was given in current small cost legally. It's approved as form. Attorney opinion of Robert Coiganal, Morris Lang, on 3/9/2023. A decision for conditional use of variance by the planning commission is final, cannot be appealed to the city council. It must be appealed in Central County Court. So variances are considered by the planning commission and stop at the planning commission. So there can't be an appeal by the developer to go to city council. At this point, if the planning commission deemed it an unnecessary variance, it would have to be appealed in district court. It is recommended the planning commission approve the variance request, case number VAR 23-3, the motion and a second. At this point, I will turn it over to Chris Baum, Garver.
Green, if you want it. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Baum from Garver. We represented the developer for the original subdivision. We're here today with this request. My address is 1995 Midfield Road, Wichita, Kansas, 67209. So when we plotted this subdivision, we plotted it with 100, basically 120-foot deep plots, varying widths, and the whole point was to get a 70-foot deep, to allow a 70-foot deep home to be built on any of the, any of the lots. So we run into a couple of situations where a 77-foot model home has been desired by the developers building in the subdivision. So with that, we don't have 77 buildable feet. We have 75 buildable feet on most of these lots. So it's an extension of the home, either in the front setback or the rear setback, to make up for that couple of feet. Now, that changes if we're on a pie-shaped lot, because the home has to just touch at one point of that curve, so you lose a little bit of space in the back. So what we did is we're asking, and I talked to Micah about this, we've got pie-shaped lots on these cul-de-sacs that we want to have those homes fit on. On occasion, on the pie-shaped lots, a corner goes into the rear yard setback, is the way it's determined from how the lot is oriented. And you didn't, Micah, did you have those other PDFs that I sent that showed the little encroachment? Okay. If you can imagine a home on a lot that's a pie-shaped lot, let me show you. Like right here, and you put a home in, and it would encroach in a rear yard setback or a side yard setback, five feet, but it's a little triangle, 10 feet by five feet encroachment. We have several of those, particularly on the cul-de-sac lots. The larger lot I mentioned, the 77-foot lot for the duplex with four bedrooms. So what we did is just decided, the easiest way to handle this is to ask for every lot, 20-foot front side, or front setback on each lot, 15-foot rear, and then 48, up to 48% lot coverage ratio for the worst lot in the subdivision. The worst lot defined by this largest 3,900-square-foot footprint on the smallest lot that would accommodate it with the new setbacks. So in the worst lot, there's only one of them, it would be a 48% coverage ratio. Duplex zoning in Goddard allows 40% ratio of the home to lot size. So to put it in perspective, we took every single lot and calculated the area of every single, single-family and multifamily lot in this subdivision, and we put that same 3,920-square-foot home on it, okay? Whether it fit or not, some, it's too big for some of the lots, but we didn't care. When we did that for the whole subdivision, if we used that ethereal lot on every one, we'd have 34% lot coverage composite for the site. So even under the, the single-family, so 34% for the whole site, one percentage lower than the single-family home requirement. When we only look at the two-family home lots, the duplex lots, and we do the same exercise, whether it can fit or not, the coverage ratio in composite for those 80 lots is 35%. Now, 21 of the 80 multifamily lots will have, break 40% of the lot ratio, but in composite, they'll be 35. They're going to be less than that because the point was made by one gentleman, we have building permits on 20 some-odd lots already. They're all fine. They're, they're under those ratios. But just for the ease of the setback variance tonight, we just made every lot that way. And we could most certainly exclude the lots that already have building permits on them. That would be fine. But just to make it simple, we just asked for one variance for each of those items. So with that, I can answer any questions or try to answer any questions. Two other, two other things were brought up by the speakers tonight. One was the 23rd Street stakes. I have no idea what that is. So I don't know if there's a county project or, or perhaps the city knows something, a project on 23rd. I don't know what those stakes would be for. Okay. I'm not familiar with that project, so that would require some additional research. Secondly, we did design detention ponds for this site. We look at the pre-developed conditions for the site, and then we look at the post-developed conditions for the site, and we run the 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storms to show that with our detention pond system, we detain those stormwater peaks at or below the existing runoff peaks for each of those different kinds of storms. There will always be water that comes out of those ponds because they're made to hold the bigger storms on the discharge weir that aims south coming out of the site. So it's not like the ponds hold all the water. They detain the water. So all the calculations were based on 40% lot coverage for this subdivision. What we just mentioned here, in the worst condition for the whole subdivision with this huge home on every single lot, it would only be 34% lot ratio, is how we do our drainage. So we're well within our, our concept modeling for the detention ponds. Hope that all makes sense, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are all the detention ponds in?
No, the south detention pond is in. This one, and this one. They're, they're connected across the street with a cul-de-sac system. This one is not yet in, up here. And for perspective, this road is in. And then there's a gravel drive that comes out onto 215th right here.
Okay.
This is in the next phase, that long detention pond there, and it drains to the west.
So is that reasonable to think that'll take care of some of the, I mean, I know we've had a lot of rain, but the current one is getting more rain than anticipated? Yes, no?
Rain is random. I mean, the, the 100, 100-year design storm in Sedgwick County, Kansas, is 7.8 inches in 24 hours, and it has a certain rainfall pattern attributed to it when you do computer modeling of it. That's just a statistical average of a storm that you could expect that would come once every 100 years. That's how you design these facilities. You can have larger rains. Halloween flood was larger. That was probably closer to like a 500-year storm, but we don't design for the 500-year storms. We design for the 100-year storm. And then again, to detain those peak discharges for those other storms that are in smaller magnitude when we do our pond design. So it's, the site's been disturbed. I don't know the situation of the ground when it rained. There's grass on part of it that, that came up during part of the construction. That would help. If, if the area wasn't grassed when it rained, it would have a high runoff coefficient because it's almost like having concrete out there if there's no, if there's no vegetation. So we're sensitive to the, to the concerns of drainage, but that's why we design the facilities that we do.
My other question was, wouldn't the, the, the need for the setback is just for the duplex lots?
I'd like to ask for the whole site because-
Right, but mainly you're focused on the duplex.
Mainly, it's that 3,920-square-foot home that is bigger than what we designed. Again, the market's kind of changed even since we plotted this two years ago. It's a, it's a four-bedroom duplex, so eight bedrooms total. 3,900 square feet on, it's a slab, so if you can imagine a home, I don't know how, where you all live, but I think my ground floor's like 2,200 square feet on my house, a single-family home.
Right.
And that would be, that's a, that's a large home. Again, most of those run about 44% coverage on the typical lot, but that worst one, the one that's the smallest that fits, is that lot right there. It just would fit on that lot, the 3,920-square-foot home with the new setbacks. But again, in composite, we're at either 34% for the whole site if we put that big of a home on every single lot, or we're at 35% ratio if we put that 3,920-square-foot home on every single duplex lot. Some of them are built already, so we're even conservative in these numbers.
And that's only if the, are these being built specifically, or is it by request?
By request.
So-
It varies. Yeah, it completely varies, right. Some of them are much smaller. Even the duplexes are much smaller than this, but we just ignored that-
Sure.
-to just give you a sense of what the, the ratios were for the entire subdivision, using the biggest lot that we can muster up to put on.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
No more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think a variance for the duplex lots only.
Are we opening ourselves up for anything in the future?
In terms of what?
If we just do the whole-
New developments? Somebody coming in asking for that right off the bat?
I think, the thing is with setbacks, setbacks are designed to basically introduce yards. It's just a way of introducing yards. And as mentioned by Mr. Baum, is that the calculations are still well below what they had originally done, even without the variance. It's, these calculations are meant, Harland, as mentioned, said, well, run the calc anyway. It's probably going to be negligible and below the threshold anyway, which after running the calc, it determined it was. It's still negligible and below the threshold. The setbacks actually add yards and, and extra space and things of that nature, but it's also taken into account that when you do a setback reduction and you introduce bigger homes, you generate more property taxes for the city. And with larger duplexes, those tenants actually tend to last longer and they become less transient than ones that would be in a smaller duplex. And as Mr., as Garver basically had mentioned with, with the original intent and request, this is not for every single lot. This is just to basically say, we're going to ask for a blanket statement. They could have done and selectively picked every lot that he wanted to, just like they did previously, and you would have had less letters being sent out. But I think it's, this is the best request because it opens it up for transparency. They're saying, hey, we're going to look at every single lot collectively to see what is the maximum impact going to be, and what's the best return given that impact. And as mentioned, it's not for every single lot, but it's good to say that we're going to look at every single lot simultaneously. So this, it's sort of a trade-off in that regard. It's like this, we're saying that the reduction is happening, and you are going to get yet less yards. You're going from 25 to 20, which is not that significant. Arbor Creek, for example, has 20-foot front yard setback, so it's not a huge reduction. And they're going from 20 to 15 in the rear, which is not that big, and the side yard setbacks are staying generally the same. It's the lot coverage for the smaller lots that are going to increase from 40 to 48%. And the trade-off is the city gets more property taxes. We are still meeting stormwater requirements. Engineering is effective and adequate, and that if there is any concerns that might happen down the road hypothetically, we could consider over detention on the north pond in the next phase if that was actually something that could be seriously considered. But at this point, after having reviewed everything with Garver and the city engineer and public works department and looked at the aggregate what's effective for the city, that's why staff recommendation was to approve the variance.
Point of information.
I'm sorry, citizens comments are over at this point, but we can talk about other if you like. Sorry.
As I we follow-
I'm sorry, the citizens comments are over. Officer's orders are to take that during citizens comments. You have a chance to speak after which, if you want to, you can come and talk to me directly in my office. However, you can call 30.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with it. And they've done their homework, I mean.
Yeah.
So they've done their homework, right? You know, it's not-
Orden signed off on it?
Yep. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Need a motion?
We'll make a motion when we approve the variance request, case number VR-23-3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the night, or if not, have a good one. This is Item G, old business. This is Item H, new business. H1, commission voting chair and vice chair. So according to the planning commission bylaws, the position of chair and vice chair must be decided by decision of the planning commission annually. This is done by selecting individuals from amongst the existing planning commission members. This is usually done in the first meeting of the year. So Page 1 of the planning commission bylaws, adopted on December 10th of 2015, amended February 7th of 2022 with ordinance 883. The commission shall organize annually at the first regular meeting after the annual appointment of new members, which is normally the first city council member in the city council meeting in December. Commissioners are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council for a term of three calendar years on a stagger basis, which is approximately one-third of the commission reappointed each year. The commission shall elect a chairperson, vice chairperson from among the appointed members at the annual organization meeting. The officer shall serve for one year. So financially and legally approved as the form. There is no action at this point. You, we are simply going to record the vote done by the planning commission for the position of chair and vice chair. So you'll see there's forms in front of you. At this point, anybody- At this point, anybody who doesn't want to be considered for chair or vice chair, please speak now, forever hold your peace. So we got two.
We deny these?
And so we'll have a motion in a second to veto that request. Please cross off Justin Parks for the position of chair and vice chair and Shane Graefing for the position of chair and vice chair. Thank you very much. At this point, feel free to check mark who you would like to see.
Vote for him.
How many meetings you gonna have?
How many?
Yeah.
You'll have to pass it down this way after I collect the tally and see what we got.
Thank you very much.
All right, let us have a tally. So I have for the position of chair, let me go ahead and look to another page. Position of chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Daniel Hayden. For the position of chair, I have one for Ryan Walker. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Daniel Hayden. For the position of chair, I have one for Darren Klein. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. For the position of chair, I have one for Ryan Walker. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Daniel Hayden. For the, for the position of chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Darren Klein. For the position of chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Darren Klein. For the position of chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. For the position of vice chair, I have one for Ryan Walker. At this point, Jamie Coyne will be the new chair moving forward in twenty twenty-four and Daniel Hayden will be the new vice chair moving forward in twenty twenty-four. So congratulations, guys, round of applause. Hard one fought.
It was a good election.
Hard fought.
It was hard fought, hard one. I'm sure we'll all move forward.
That's what Doug Hall's doing.
All right, moving forward. This is H two, this is a site plan for boat and RV storage. So Brandon Wilkins of K forty-two Rental and Sales has submitted a site plan for a boat and RV storage location off of Casado and Martins. He called me around six o'clock, said he wasn't going to be able to make it, but he wanted to try to make it, but he wasn't going to be able to. Uh, all commercial buildings require site plans to be reviewed by the community development director, being myself, and it is determined to be necessary approved by the planning commission. All site plans must show elevations and any facade coverings, if required, must be approved by the planning commission if they are proposing a metal type building or all metal. On September eleventh of twenty twenty-three, the planning commission reviewed the possibility of facade, of facade variance for the commercial building on the lot. After review, they determined that the furthest south building would be allowed to have a variance under VR twenty-three dash one only for the furthest south building. Brandon Wilken is proposing one building under this understanding, pushing the south of the lot to meet these requirements. After the planning commission, each commercial building must have the architectural engineering plan reviewed by the metropolitan area building construction department and MBCD before they can pull a building permit. Planning commission is viewing the site plan for a new boat and RV storage building. Address is six oh five East Martins Drive, zoning is C two general business district, land uses boat and RV. Building floor area is eleven thousand two fifty percent, building coverage is thirty-seven point three two, building height sixteen. Parking is zero, there's no onsite employees, so there's no parking requirement. All the parking for the boat and RV will be under, uh, the building itself will be enclosed storage on concrete. This is the site. You've seen this one before. And this is the proposed layout. They're going to have a fenced off area here. As you remember from the fencing requirements, this is going to be a metal fence right over here, a metal this way so that the, it meets the screening requirements, but they're also enclosing all of them in here as well. This is the elevations. Financially and not legally approved as the form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the site plan for the boat and RV storage building. The motion in a second. At this point, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. As mentioned, Brandon Wilkins wasn't going to be able to make it today.
Assuming it's going to be a six-foot fence on the sides?
Yeah, that's a minimum requirement.
What about the front?
The front is also six foot.
Six foot?
Mm-hmm.
One building?
Only one building. So if you remember from the September meeting, basically he wanted to know if he had to do a facade and he was proposing three buildings, two that were closer to the front and one in the back.
Okay.
And per the planning commission's requirements, the only one that was allowed to have a facade variance was the one furthest to the south. So he scratched the ones that were closest on the north side, removed those ones, only the one of the south, excepting that facade variance. And noting that the planning commission said that they preferred to not have a chain link with slats through it. He's doing the metal fence on the north side and the west side, connecting to his neighbor's fence on the east side.
Okay. So what's going to be in the open area if it's not in the building, just-
Gravel?
Just gravel?
It's just going to be for turning around and getting in and getting out. I think there's three approaches on that already. I think he's only going to be using one of them. It's not required to use all three. Here's one, two, three, are the approaches that are in the public right away. He's just going to be using this one.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no requirement that you have to use an approach if it's on your lot.
Now in the future, is he going to go back with the two other buildings?
If he does, you would see it again.
Okay. What kind of metal fence has he put in that?
It was ones, um, I don't have an image of it. I could have pulled it from the last meeting when we had the consideration of the fence discussion.
Rod iron?
Not rod iron because it's screening, so it's got to be solid metal. So it's like, I wonder what's a good example for a reference, but solid metal, six foot. Except for the gate, it's going to be different, but um, it's going to be, since, since rod iron had too much visibility and originally he wanted to do chain link and there wasn't necessarily anything that prohibited that, and he wanted to put slats through it. In consideration of that, in lieu, we're looking at that in tandem with the variance, he said, well, if we're looking at considering a variance for a facade, I believe the planning commission said that they would rather see something besides chain link with slats because slats get beat up by weather over the time and it looks pretty tacky over, over the years. And so he's doing a solid metal one.
It's like the building siding.
Yeah, something similar to that. I can't, he didn't give me, he didn't submit something like, that I can reference as material. I'm afraid I don't have the construction experience to even know what that would look like. But nothing that's, it's considered contiguous metal. What a good example would be.
And you said that was on the north and west?
North and west, there's a fence here already, so he's connecting basically this, this, and this, and he's connecting to this fence over here. This is all existing chain link right now, so he's connecting that as well.
Assuming he's going to have an apron in front of these buildings, cement apron?
I don't know what a cement apron is. Explain it to a layman.
Approach to the, what is there, looks like there's what, fifteen?
Yeah, so the, the building itself is going to be on slabs. I'm assuming it's going to be angled enough and have a cement apron so that you can-
Do you need drainage or anything like that on that?
Right now it's less than an acre, so the drainage is either going to be to the north where it hits the curb and gutter and the storm inlets over here, or it's going to go to the south and hit this drainage esmen over here and flow to the east and hit the-
Pretty sure he's showing gravel for a whole bit right up to the building.
Oh, right up to the building, okay.
Where is that? Oh, right there.
You mean that one I stand at?
I have some picture up there. Gravel's not an impervious surface, so the only thing he had is the, the building.
Yeah.
And it is a mono slope, so it's going to be shedding all the water to one end. Right to the back.
And the fence next to it is dog ear that he's tying into. So I couldn't remember, so.
There is drainage flow over here. You can see the arrows pointing for drainage flow to the north to Martins, which is, like I said, curb and gutter and storm inlets. And then if not, the southern flow will flow into this drainage esmen over here and flow to the east over out to the-
The back of the building I was wondering about because it's a mono pitch, it'll shed it all to the back. Question?
We'll make a motion, we approve the site plan for the boat and RV storage building.
Second. Who wants to second it? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. This is H three, this is a discussion about a new recreational zoning classification. So zoning classifications were adopted as a regulatory control over land development. As market trends change, zoning classifications should change as well to maximize land value and property taxes without compromise in health, safety, welfare. On December fourth of twenty twenty-three, the city annexed property for Mark Withrow. Mr. Withrow mentioned he would like to build an RV park dedicated to those in the area traveling for sports events, et cetera. In review of the zoning classifications available, none of them were designed for an RV park. Some of them allow for RV storage, but not use. Uh, reviewing other city zoning regulations, city staff found some zoning classifications that might be reasonable to consider for adoption once modified to the city's use. New zoning classification needs to be approved first by the planning commission, finally by the governing body. Once approved by the governing body, it becomes official thirty days after publication in the city newspaper. So the current zoning classifications regulations are found in Article four zoning districts. The planning commission is discussing if they would consider adopting new zoning classification designed for parks, recreational areas, RV parks, et cetera. Basically what it would do is classify recreational areas, whatever that would look like. We haven't really determined that yet. That's why it's a discussion item. Plating within formal lot layouts because we're talking about parking RVs for use as opposed to having houses. Focuses on short duration related activities, defines acceptable uses, conditional uses, bulk regulations, similar to other zoning classifications. Financially, there is none currently. If only considered, there would be a small publication cost per state law. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended the planning mission receive and file and discuss the possibility of a recreational zoning district and direct staff accordingly. We would have to publish it in the city newspaper allowed twenty days and you guys would have to see it at the next regular planning commission meeting if you wanted to. At this point, it's just open dialogue. What are your guys' thoughts? I included an, um, an example from Sterling, Kansas. They have a recreational living district. And so it's just something they'll kind of use for reference. I'm not sure exactly how we would tailor all of this besides obviously the question of RV parks and what does that look like? I looked at Wichita, um, there is an RV park to the east of Talia. It looks like it's listed as limited commercial, so I guess RV parks are allowed under limited commercial in Wichita. Maybe it's something that we would want to consider as a limited commercial. We have a general business and we have a central business. We don't have a limited commercial. But at the same time, maybe recreational living would be better. It's something that we could use if we ever wanted to classify parks under recreational living. We could do that. We could do RV parks. We could do something of that nature, but right now this is just an open discussion about that.
Have any issue with a new classification, especially if we can determine what the lot size is, I guess, if we're going to call them lots?
Mm-hmm.
They park the units? Because I know that one you're talking about there, by the time they park their RV and they put their awning out, somebody else puts their awning out, they're almost touching.
They're basically sharing fire pits at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, that's generally true. So I guess that's, that's a good question. It'd be if you had a recreational living district and you allow for RV and you had a lot, minimum lot width, you looked at the one next to, I don't know what the name of that RV park is.
Four Seasons?
Yeah, Four Seasons.
Four Seasons. So if you use that as an example, maybe you would want to add an additional ten feet for the lot width on those, um, as a consideration.
Those are tight.
They don't mind. I mean that genuine, I mean that, that's a fact. Is, is this something you've been approached about or just?
Well, as mentioned, Mark Withrow, when he, when he approached the city and said, hey, can you annex? I bought seventeen acres, basically north of the Dylan's warehouse. He bought seventeen acres and said, I would like to annex. I was like, well, great, you know, we are growing, feel free, we'll, you know, sign this petition, we'll take it to the city council. Why do you want to be annexed? What kind of land uses are you thinking? He said he would like to do RV park.
Okay.
Um, he said that obviously with a lot of traffic coming to the star bond with the baseball diamonds, he would like to cater to that as well as anybody else in the area. And so he said with a lack of RV parks in the area, he thought maybe that'd be an acceptable land use since it's right off of fifty-four, right across from an industrial district, which is the Dylan's warehouse. And so I was looking at our zoning and there's nothing that really says an acceptable use being RV park, you know? And so it's either that we modify zoning classification like an R one or something, RUI maybe, and allow that one to be an RV park, um, or we adopt a new zoning classification. So we either modify an existing one or we introduce another one. Maybe it's, there's pros and cons either way.
I would think that would fall into the RUI category. It'd almost be better to come up with a new classification, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, could I participate in this?
I'm sorry, citizen's comments are over at this point.
Craig Crossit, city administrator. So the example that Mike had provided in your agenda packet was from a community I served prior. A little bit more of a unique situation there because we're, the context was just different, but some of the definitions could be utilized for a new zoning district. Some of the things, if that's the route you guys go, that you want to consider and Mike and I kind of work on this together. Um, but you're going to have smaller lots, you're going to allow a greater lot coverage. Uh, one of the really important things is discussing how long you'll allow them to park there. We don't want it to turn into an extended living situation where someone is overnighting there for, you know, months at a time or something to that regard, unless you wanted to, you know, you can do what you want. But typically what you'll see is no more than fifteen days at a time without moving stalls or something like that. Just to kind of keep it so you don't have folks that are pulling up there, you know, setting their camper on bricks and, and making it their new permanent living arrangement. Uh, it probably wouldn't fit within the current, one of the current zoning districts purely because of the temporary nature of it. Uh, but those are some of the things that, that you guys may want to consider as we look at this. And I think the Withrow is going to be the first of others that could come. And it wouldn't only apply to RVs or bumper poles or campers, it could also apply to cabins. Uh, if somebody set up one of these RV parks and they wanted to have, say, some, you know, fourteen by twenty-foot cabins or something like that that were also available, maybe they're traveling from across the country and they got some cousins who live in the county over, but they don't have a camper and they want to come hang out too while they're visiting the area. Well, those cabins might exist to allow something like that. So, uh, the, the big thing will be the lot sizes, the total lot coverage and how many days you want to let them stay there at a given time without needing to move, needing to move onward. So then you got to look at definitions about what's a camper versus a mobile home and X, Y, Z. You know, we've already got some of those definitions and stuff probably in our zoning and subdivision regs, but um, I think that we'd like to bring you guys a, a new draft zoning district at the next planning commission meeting, but I'll let Mike speak more to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like the State Lakes have the same thing. You can only stay in a certain lot.
Which one, what was that called?
Period of time. The State Lakes.
State Lakes? Oh, sure.
Even to, uh-
Home study, you have to be careful with home study, but I mean, the, the one that you mentioned before, it's, I bet fifty percent permanent residents.
Yeah.
Extended stay, I don't know. I mean, anywhere from six months to three, four, or five years.
Right.
They don't have to move as far as I know.
Mark, yeah, and it didn't, it didn't look like, I drove by that several times and I drove in it and around it and wanted, but Mark Withrow didn't mention if it was going to be, if he wanted you long-term or short-term, he never mentioned it. So I don't know. It seemed that he said from the conversation that he was catering to people who were traveling through, not people who wanted to be long-term residents. That being said, he didn't say definitively, so I don't want to presume.
That's unlikely to stipulate, correct?
You could, absolutely.
I guess too, I'd be curious to know, I mean, what's our, what's our risk there if we said, you know, hey, if you want to stay forever, go for it? if we said, you know, hey, if you want to stay forever, go for it? What do we gain from it? What would the risk be? Like I said, I mean, these are just things, questions I, you know, to research, because I know in the Irving River area of Missouri, they had issues with people claiming home-steady because they stayed too long, so now they force you to move every month, because people take advantage of the situation.
Yes.
That's a route we want to look at. We definitely want it for the cap. I think the area that you guys have mentioned, five years seems a little long. Maybe it's a number of months, things like...
Right, I'm just saying, that's what's going on there. You know, I know someone that lives there as well.
There's other lakes, such as Canopolis, where you can actually have, there's a little mobile home area, kind of a bad comparison, but you can't stay there year-round. You can only stay there during the summer. You actually own the mobile home, but you don't own the land. You can be there all through the late season, maybe it's April through September or something, but you can't be there, you know, for X amount of days during the off-season. There's, you can cut this 100 different ways. It'll be up to you guys and working with Micah and his research to determine what parameter you want to set.
Sure. Like I say, my big question would be the legality of how long they can stay before we get ourselves in trouble, or that we'd be forced to allow them to stay forever.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. We would just have to look at other precedents around and just kind of see what they're doing, and then at the same time, talk to Mr. Withrow about what he was planning and what his thoughts are, and then mention the concerns about long-term residency. You know, that's something that we want to avoid, if that's something we want to avoid.
Even if he said a year, it's fine. He could stipulate it to 15 days. That could be his, I mean, he wouldn't have to...
That's right. If he set a maximum, he doesn't have to abide by the maximum. He could just reduce it as necessary.
I think in the off-peak months, you'd want to have a stricter amount of days you would allow them to be there versus maybe during the on-peak months, when more people are traveling.
There is a lack of RV parks. Other than that one, you got to go to, I think, South Wichita or clear it up by Valley Center.
Used to have a KOA, but we don't have that anymore on, you know, 54. It used to be back behind Hamilton, but that's gone.
I think we need to look at zoning classification.
From a tax revenue perspective, how does that work?
You know, when I was looking at the county one, the revenue looked like it was listed as residential, so it's going to be assessed at 11.5, but I don't know. I'd have to dig into it a little bit deeper to see what that would look like.
We need to check on hotel transient guest tax to see if that is collected there, which would of course be a bit of a...
Mm-hmm. Transient guest tax applies to hotels, bed and breakfasts, and Airbnbs, they collect that, which, that's very advantageous to cities, because it's considered a tax on guests, not necessarily a tax on the citizens, so it's generally considered favorable.
And that would obviously, I assume, be charged with the person that's using the land?
Yes.
But the previous tax you're talking about, that's charged with the property owner?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the property taxes, when they're charged with the property owner, usually offsets it by the lot cost, so if you're renting that lot, you're going to be absorbing that property tax cost, generally speaking.
Gotcha.
So at this point, I'm getting a directive to publish in the city newspaper allowed 20 days and consider possibly a first draft of a new recreational zoning, a recreational living zoning classification. Is that kind of the direction we're going on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. So we're all in agreement on that one. I'll move forward. This is H4, Goddard Galleria, second preliminary replat. So Baughman Company has submitted a preliminary plat behalf of the developer, doing a replat of portion of the Goddard Galleria. This replat will focus on the center of Goddard Galleria, converting one tract of land at 28.579 acres into six commercial lots. Replanting land is the same process as plating, and as such, they need to submit a preliminary plat and final plat. Final plat can be considered concurrently within the same meeting, and it will be presented as agenda item H.5. Final plat needs to be considered by the city council for final approval. Planning commission's considering approving preliminary replat for the Goddard Galleria second development. Number of lots are six. Zoning is C2 general business district. Land use is future commercial. There's nothing defined right now. Lot 1A, Lot 2A, Lot 3A, Lot 4A, Lot 5A, Lot 6A are listed right here for square footage. This is what's being replatted, so this is the existing plat right now. You can see how it's broken up. They're taking the centerpiece and they're breaking it that way. So here's the large lots, and then it'll break into one, two, three, four, five, six. Financially and legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the preliminary replat for the Goddard Galleria second development contingent upon final engineering review of all necessary stormwater requirements. And we do have Thomas Joyce of Baughman here representing, he's the agent for the applicant. So questions or comments and thoughts? Feel free to ask at this time.
Discussion?
Huh?
Discussion?
Do we have any idea what we're going to put in there? Or what's going to be?
They're just making the lot smaller to where they can...
We've had some tentative discussion with the developer, but nothing definitive. But since it's all commercial, anything they are proposing would ultimately end up with a site plan, and you will have to see it. But right now, it's all theoretical.
That lot was roughly the size of what Walmart was, correct?
I'm not aware of what the size of Walmart is. Thomas, do you have any idea?
It's close. I think this one's a little bit bigger, so without a street came in, but yeah, they're both.
So that was like 653,000?
Roughly a third, maybe. Give me, I don't know where you get to go on that huge lot anyways.
If, I mean, you could do a lot split in the future.
Try to keep it...
I think it's going to be a Buc-E's, is that right?
Probably go over a while.
250 gas stations. Coffee and gas all over.
Those things are big. We're just re-slicing the pie.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with it.
I don't see any problem with it, though.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary replat for the Goddard Galleria second development.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is item H.5, so this is Goddard Galleria second final replat. So once again, it's going to be the same, what we just discussed. This is the final plat. So we don't have a one-step final plating process, that's why they have to submit a preliminary and a final. That's why you're seeing them as two separate agenda items. It's the same. And here's the final plat with some of the contours and everything removed, just the stuff that the county wants to see for recording. I will mention, with Shane no longer being the chair for the new year, they're going to have to strike Shane Gravienoff here.
Yeah.
And replace it with the new chair when the Mylar is printed. The Mylar is that large plastic piece of paper that they print out, and then everyone signs it, and it gets recorded, so...
He can stay.
I would go hang out with Doug.
So that's just something to mention, and the existing mayor's name is still on the signature block, and there'll be a new mayor elected on the 16th, and so that number, that's going to have to change as well. But right now, you're just approving a contingent upon what, everything you see here, and then final engineering, but when they print the Mylar, they'll change out, put the new chair and the new mayor. It's the same recommendation, still engineering review. Baughman's going to have to work with Harland to review it. Technically, it's already been platted once, this is a replat, but they're going to have to review the stormwater to make sure everything's still adequate and that it's being detained properly. Most of the detention, I believe, drains, maybe Thomas doesn't know this or not, but that most of the detention, I believe, drains to south of Walmart, to that detention bond that they have, but there's also detention that's probably flowing to the north into the Frontage Road as well. So Harland and Baughman are going to have to work that out and figure out what needs to be done for that.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the final replat of the Goddard Galleria second development contingent upon final engineering review of all necessary stormwater requirements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thomas, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the night, if you're not. Have a good one.
Thanks.
This is I, staff report. So the background, Mike Scoggi, me, myself, community development director, compiles a short, concise report outlining relevant information and presents it to the planning commission. So this is an overview of all of our developments and progress so far at different stages of development. There's, obviously, we're going to have two names here, so you'll see 167 West Edition, you'll see it again. That's because we break it into type of land use, and the number of buildings, and the number of units, and then we multiply that times three to say about we... Roughly, it's actually 2.98, but we're going to round it up to three people per unit. And so you have the total breakdown here. All of these are in different stages, so we'll have 167 West Edition, which Baughman's also working on, they're working with KDOT for final approval on that one. 23rd South Edition, that one's already been approved by the planning commission and city council, so you're going to, the Mylar has been signed, it's going to be recorded with the county. We'll see petitions for that, for improvements, just like you see in all the rest of these developments. Arbor Creek is obviously underway. We have Phase 1 done, Phase 2 is underway, and Arbor Creek Second Edition is underway. Ben Healy Development, the plan has been done, we're going to probably be seeing petitions for that, for improvements coming forward. Big Arm, the duplexes that we have are working under Garver right now, those 29 duplexes off of 23rd and 199th. They're working with the gas line right now to try to make sure that they have all the requirements needed. And then we have Bridger at Maple, which is on the north end of Maple. They are obviously underway right now, putting in all the necessary improvements. Cedar Edition is done, there's five duplexes that's on Main Street between Main and Cedar. Cloverleaf is done at this point. We will be selling all the temporary notes for improvements pretty soon and turn them into permanent financing. Dove Landing is, there's been five lots sold, they're still working on the remaining of them. Goddard Apartments is something that we're working on right now. Collectively, city council has approved a certain amount of financing mechanisms necessary for the Goddard Apartments, and we're working through all the due diligence period of that right now. Goddard Crossing, we're working through that development agreement right now. It was approved, the four acres behind Baumgar's is going to be five, fourplexes. You saw the site plan for that, they've already proved it, they're going through M, A, B, C, D right now for architectural and engineering. Goddard Trails End, we've discussed that today, where that's at. Rustic Creek is underway right now with Phase 1. We're going to be turning that into permanent financing very soon and moving into Phase 2, which Rustic Creek is right off of 199 and north of the Frontage Road. Arbor Creek South Development is about 77 acres, annexed recently by city council, the last city council meeting. It's an extenuation of the Arbor Creek development, he's going to be doing some more single-family detached traditional homes in that development. So that's right south of Arbor Creek. Total, we have about 1,623 buildings with about 2,285 units, which equals about 6,855 people, which puts our future population, well, that's not very good shading, I should change the numbering on that, but that puts our future population around 11,939. So in 2010, our population was 4,344, which was an increase from 2,000, about 108%. Between 2010 and 2020, we had a slowdown, it went up to 584, which was a 17% increase. If this population comes on board by the end of 2030, then we'll have a 135% increase in our total population, closing in at around 12,000 people. At this point, we'll turn over to planning commission or comments.
It's your last meeting? Oh, I got one more meeting. That's my last, on the big chair. Hot seat. Any comments?
None.
None.
Nope.
Welcome, Art. New commissioner.
Oh, yeah. You notice Doug was a little bit different today?
He looks the same. He's just looking the wrong way.
I have no comments.
Very good. Then we'll move on to adjournment. Next regular planning commission meeting will be February 12th, 2024, at 7 o'clock. A new planning commissioner chair and a new vice chair.
Make a motion, will you, Jim?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.